Next, we have Board Administrative Reports. President's Report, I have nothing on my own agenda. Do we have anything from the superintendent?
Yes, we have a very brief Superintendent Good News report. As things slow down in the summer, the reports get a little shorter for this evening on July 9th. First of all, congratulations to Washington Elementary for receiving continuing Spotlight on Schools grant. The congratulations to Washington for $25,000 of Continuing Spotlight on School grant. Washington continues to meet the main requirements of that grant, and those are listed. And particularly the issue of using some of their model success in demonstrating and sharing with other schools their success of beating the, continuing to be a beat, beat the odds school on an ongoing continuous basis. And I believe we're at six years with that school at the present time. Oshkosh Pottery for Patients event. Oshkosh North High School art students raised a total of $836 through their 2014 Pottery for Patients fundraising event. Students sold their pottery pieces in an effort to raise money for the Ronald McDonald House in memory of Emily Phillips in honor of Ashley Schreiber and Rachel Spanbauer. The Ronald McDonald House, which opened in 1984, provides a little or no cost to home away from home for over 33,000 families of seriously ill children. Great job for that effort on the part of our Potter, at, Potters at North High School. Future Authors Academy, this year 36 students enrolled in the Future Authors Academy, held at Oshkosh North High School and sponsored by the Fox Valley Writing Project. Students in grades five through 12 were recommended by their English teachers and invited to register for the academy because of their love of writing. Registration was open to all interested students. Co-directors Jennifer Sline, Lisa Hutchinson, and Leon Morel. Plan structures and writing time with the options to meet the needs of students, the interests and needs of all students. Students and directors learned revision writing publishing tips from a local publisher and author Julie Metta. The academy accumulated in an open mic night held at the New Moon Cafe. Thank you for the teachers who recommended the students, the writers, and also the sponsorship of QuickTrip, St. Vincent de Paul, and Pete's Garage Bar, who also supported the Future Authors Academy with donations. The Spartan Shack at North has, which is continuing its work during the summer as providing snacks during the day for our summer school students. Students learn life skills by taking, filling orders, counting cash, making menus, preparing food and drinks, and using cash register, taking inventory and offer customer service sessions. One enormous success. High school transition teachers Jessica Rolwalt-Pink and Amanda Bond worked closely with Jill Williams, who was awarded the grant to begin this endeavor. And bearing in mind, this is modeled after the same activity with students at West High School. Oshkosh North and Oshkosh West students have cultural experiences. Twenty-nine Spanish students from Oshkosh North and Oshkosh West traveled to Costa Rica and Nicaragua from June 18th through the 27th. During their trip, they visited rainforests, an active volcano, bat caves. Several museums spent time each day in language-intensive classes and stayed with families so that they could experience the full cultural immersion. Students were very enthusiastic, especially about the week-long stay with local families. What an excellent experience of multiculturalism. Lastly, you have a whole list of superintendents' activities in the last two-week period. With that completes President Wiedenhoff the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Do we have reports by other board members?
The Education Committee met on Monday, June 23rd. Seems like eons ago. Most of the meeting was spent with an elementary task force. A group of teachers addressed the committee about their concerns at the elementary level, specifically workload, prep time, and assessments, and how that is kind of creeping into instructional time. So we listened to that and brainstormed ideas and really tried to hear the concerns. Actions that came out of that discussion is the task force is going to meet again and work on a plan with administration, specifically Mike Nault. And then I believe the task force is going to also come to Facilities and Finance to discuss some options and brainstorm some ideas in terms of meeting their needs. And the next meeting will be Monday, August 4th at 12:15.
Thank you. Other reports?
Facilities and Finance met on June 19th. We met Tom Beck, who is the Interim Building and Grounds Director. We looked at the budget variance report. At this point, we are higher than we were last year, but Sushnor is not concerned based on the district being under budget last year. The update on Oakland spending is that there is a crack in the Torazo floor, which will be fixed by Myron. There are also cork strips that were placed along the walls, but they weren't screwed in. So they're falling off, and they will be fixed. The Webster Stanley Middle School auditorium update. To date, they have fundraised $15,500. They've written two large grants, one to Lowe's for 25 grand and the other one to Oshkosh Corp Foundation for $142,000. The community foundations involved trying to help find other donors. Looks like already we're projecting the cost to be above our original predictions by about $25,000 to $30,000. And in order not to burn everybody out and to have a deadline, we chose February 1st as the deadline for fundraising for that effort. And then we talked about the need to fundraise versus having the district pay for this, since we don't fundraise for anything else in our district. So we did talk about that and how, you know, Webster kind of got ignored when the Kimball Auditorium was built and then there was an endowment. And so we went through that exercise, and it was determined that once this auditorium is built and it's finished, that it will become a budgetary item. And the district will take care of that. And we estimated about $3,500 a year would be needed for maintenance. So that'll be a district budgetary item, and we won't do that ever again. We talked about, oh, naming rights, the policy's vague. So it's just going to kind of be, if somebody does want to come forward, then it'll be considered at that time. We just have a very vague policy, and it's vague on purpose. It's intentional, and we like to keep it that way. So. Cross-country ski gear donation. Stan Mack provided two examples of posters. St. Vincent has agreed to be a depository for us, very generous of them. And they just need help. Once they fill boxes, they would need somebody to then move it to a facility, and then they would put in another box, and we can fill it. So they'll just need help with transportation. West baseball field lighting update, the project did not happen. Architect selection at Lakeside Bray was approved during the board meeting. And approval of public depositories was approved on the June 18th board meeting. Let's see. Looks like we're going to combine July and August meeting. So our next Facilities and Finance meeting will be the second Thursday in August. And that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else have meetings or something to report?
Yeah, I just extend a little background on the issue of the baseball field lighting at West. It didn't happen because the grant that was being solicited did not fund it. It was an opportunity we had to consider having fully funded baseball lights at West, and the funder did not come through. So it isn't a project that was started or stopped. It was a potential dream that didn't come true.
Thanks.
All right. No other reports, then we will move on to workshop number one, Handbook Changes.
Sue is going to cover for Mike this evening in his absence and respond to questions. I believe, I know that board members received in their packet a complete listing of the handbook and recommended housekeeping, generally housekeeping changes. I don't believe there were contents of significance, but Sue will review the highlights of those. And thank you, Sue, for stepping in for Mike in his absence.
You're welcome. We've gone over most of them together anyway, so it didn't take much to bring myself up to speed on what they were. Obviously, the first page is just, and this is in your packet. The first date was just to change the date once this is approved. The second page has a couple of them. The first one is under Support Staff. A position was reclassified. The secretary to the deputy superintendent and the secretary, the same person, is also secretary to the Executive Director of Administration. This position was reclassed. What we usually do is we have an outside party that looks at when reclass requests come in. Just though it takes kind of the emotion out of it, we send the job descriptions to this third party who is an expert in that area. And this reclass was recommended by both Stan Mack as the superintendent and this unbiased third party that looks at our job descriptions.
So you did mean to have it be Superintendent slash Executive Director of Administration as opposed to Deputy Superintendent as one and Executive Director of Administration as a separate one?
It's one position that reports to both of those.
Right. Sorry, that was just a question I had on here.
Is Deputy Superintendent?
Deputy Superintendent, but it's one person that reports to, oh, yeah. It's the executive assistant to the deputy superintendent and the executive director of Administration. So the person reports to both of those.
Got it.
Mike and I had a chance to talk about that, and I know he's not here tonight. And the conversation had to do with a change of assignment that the board voted on in June. And that had to do with when Denise Butler retired, the board was presented with a motion or a resolution that the person who was going to replace her had to resign from her current, her then-current role and then be appointed. And I questioned why the person had to do that. He wasn't sure. But he was going to check on this one, because this one wasn't handled that way. The person, as far as he knew, did not have to resign from her previous role.
Well, this is different, because this is a reclassification. The person is technically in the same job. Their desk hasn't moved, they're in the same job. We're reclassifying the job from, it's actually from a union position to a non-union position.
Okay. And then my other question was, doesn't that require board approval? And if there's a salary adjustment, which I'm assuming there was in this case. And he thought, yes, there probably should have been a board vote on that, but he wasn't sure that that had actually taken place.
I would have to go back and look at his.
And maybe he, maybe that was, maybe that, maybe the board did vote on that as part of a package.
Yeah, it could be. I don't agree with that. Because this actually happened a while ago. This happened, I mean, it, I know it happened since I started, so it happened within the last year. But this hasn't been, this has already taken place. We're changing the handbook to reflect that that position is now listed in here.
Thank you.
And I would argue that we, I think, on the first point, Barb, I think the issue that I think we really need to clarify, when a person, if you're changing from a bargaining unit position to a confidential employee position, does that really require a resignation from the position? I think that that really bears some exploration, because that would be a unique practice. Because when, let me use it this way. When, if we have a teacher who becomes a principal, we don't force them to resign from their teaching position to become a principal. That, yeah, that they change assignments. That's really, I think you're absolutely right on, we should clarify that issue.
The second one is retirement. This really, just as a clarification, it adds a little bit more clarification to the definition of retirement. And I think that's important, because retirement may or may not have benefits that are associated with it. And the past practice has been, we added the fact that they have to collect Wisconsin Retirement System to have it be deemed a retirement. That's how the past practice has been in the district, so we thought we'd just clarify the definition.
And actually, I guess I just had, sorry, but probably something that I would like to have phoned you about earlier if I had the time, but I'd like to wordsmith that if possible. It seems a little ambigu, excuse me, ambiguous, because it says "and in fact retires", but we're talking about the definition of retirement, which lists above as being defined as separation of employee. So it says what retirement is, it's the separation, and then it says "and in fact retires". I'm wondering if you want to change that to something more specific, like "and in fact retires", in quotes, "not taking on employment elsewhere and as defined under Wisconsin Retirement System", or something to that effect, so that it, because right now, it seems to, it says "and in fact retires", and if you go and read the definition, it seems circular. Do you know what I'm saying?
Well, the goal is not, you don't necessarily care if they take employment elsewhere. We want them to actually retire with the Wisconsin Retirement System and start collecting their WRS.
In order to avail themselves of district retirement.
In order, yeah.
And in fact retires under the Wisconsin Retirement System.
I mean, I think, I think we can reword it, but I don't want wording in there that says they can't have another job, because that's not under our control.
Do you want to say something then about collecting, or?
And we can look at that and maybe find a better way of expressing that.
Thanks.
Maybe collects, yeah, collects might be a better way. The next one on page three was just a policy change. That was just a, it was, the right policy wasn't listed there. Then we go all the way to page 11, and that one just added a D at the end of a word.
Thank you.
There wasn't D missing from "and". Page 13 at the bottom. We provide vision insurance. We have for a while, the employee pays for it, but we just felt it should be listed under all of the insurances that were offered. Actually, the term says "offered" by the district, and we do offer vision. And that wasn't listed. Page 14, there wasn't a space there. So between the words "four" and "two days", there wasn't a space, so we added a space. Page 15, we added the word "unpaid" under duty-free lunch for teachers, or under professionals. That's been the practice, and it's listed under all of the others, even though professionals are usually salaried individuals. It's always been the understanding that that half hour is not paid when it comes to computing. If someone needs to be docked, it's important to know whether that lunch is paid or unpaid, and it's always been considered unpaid. So it was just a matter of clarifying that in the contract, or in the handbook. Seventeen, they said it was just a spacing, so that this wasn't, so part six didn't start on one page versus another page. And then page 20 is regarding vacation. And this is just clarifying practice. We didn't change the way we, the practice. It was just never highlighted in here, practice. So this is just clarifying the practice that we already do. Page 21 talks about the biometric screening and written health questionnaire. The company that we go with now doesn't have a written health questionnaire, but you have to participate in a phone conference. So we just wanted to clarify that in the handbook, so people know that.
I was wondering, since you're in here and doing these, if you wanted to strike the first two lines under dental insurance, which talk about 2013. I mean, it's no longer, we're beyond that point already. We could take those out at this point.
Okay.
Mr. Dito, did you have something?
Yes, I guess what I'm seeing here is, kind of going back to policy and governance, it seems to be that we're reactive now to telephonic counters. Is there not better wording that we could use, which would be some sort of health, just whatever?
Right, I agree, because if we ever did this out and changed companies again, they might have a little different tactic. So there might be a better way of wording that.
More of a generic health screening. I don't know, just some sort of thing which would be.
And then we could maybe say that may include.
Right, there you go. Sure.
And on the bottom of page 21 and the top of page 22, this is really the only thing, in my opinion, that's really, that changes a practice or changes something in the handbook. Past practice has allowed people who carry short-term disability. Short-term disability is offered to our employees at their cost, so they pay for the premium of short-term disability. In the past, we've allowed people to collect their short-term disability and use a full sick day. So if a person is out for an extended period or even out for a few days, they're actually earning more money by being sick than they are working, because they're collecting short-term disability and a full sick day. What this language does is it changes it so they can still draw a sick day, but they only draw a portion of a sick day that makes them whole between the two. Because the purpose of short-term disability is really for people who don't have enough sick leave. Some people choose to continue to carry it even though they have a full pot of sick leave. So this makes it, so they don't earn more money, they do not earn more money out of the sick. And I think the very last one is just a spacing, so that part B started on the next page rather than just a little bit of it on the last page. And that is the last change.
All right. Any questions? Barb?
These weren't related to the changes, but rather to the document that I believe was approved last July by the board. I would refer to pages seven and eight in the document. And specifically at the section that starts on page seven at the bottom, "Staff Acceptable Use of Information Technology and Communications Resources", and then continues on to page eight. I know that this handbook applies to various employee groups. And I know that the strategic plan under goal number one talks about supporting and recognizing the value of our quality teachers by all community members. And in reading this section on acceptable use, I have a real concern about the section that begins, it's actually the third paragraph above where part D attendance begins. "The district reserves the right to review", no, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one.
All employees are expected to work every day?
I'm good with that one. No, it has to do with the fact that the district can monitor, staff use of district technology can be monitored at any time.
Is it the second paragraph, "The district relies upon technology resources to communicate information; therefore, staff will be responsible for monitoring these resources regularly"?
I can't find, I can't find the specific reference, but I know it's in this section.
It's in this section that says "The district reserves the right to review files and communications", that one. And then the second sentence is.
Right. Okay, thank you. "Staff use of district technology can be monitored at any time", and then the sentence goes on. I just find that out of alignment with telling our staff that we want to support and recognize and value them, and then we turn around and say, "But we have the right to look at your communication at any time without cause." I think these people should either be, there should be something in here about due process, or there should be a reason to look at what's on someone's computer. I fully support the notion that people should not be using district equipment inappropriately to view inappropriate websites that would not be acceptable by the general public. But I just don't think it's appropriate to have staff members randomly, is what I take away from this, who could be randomly sitting down and looking through people's emails or use of technology. If there was a reason, if there was evidence or proof that someone was doing something inappropriate, then yes. But I don't think that staff members, we have a shortage of staff members in this district. And to have staff members with the authority to randomly review people's use of technology, I think is not a good use of our resources.
I think there's probably a more positive way you can say that, but it's also important for staff to know that it's public record. That any email could be requested as public record at any time. And the only thing that's private is specific student information. And so I think staff also needs to be aware of, anything they say on email could be public record. And maybe that's.
Maybe that's a better way to put it, you should say it.
Well, and it's also important to realize there's a whole separate board policy that deals with that. And it actually says that specific fact, that there is no expectation of privacy, and that is more of a legal distinction, that they, any communication that we do as a district employee is an open record, and therefore, there should be no expectation of privacy at any time for any of these communications. This is all for professional use and is wide open at any time. So that's in board policy for staff as well as students. So this actually aligns very well with the existing board policy that's in place and open records law. I mean, I would hate to have somebody believe that there is any expectation at all of privacy of any email they send inside the district system or any website they surf inside the district system. We've been very clear about that, that it is one of those things that you just, that's part of an open records environment.
To clarify the issue, there is no staff person or any person that has time in their daily duties to randomly check on anybody's email. The only time that it occurs is if there's a specific complaint or a request for information on the open records process that occurs, because no one monitors, everybody scrambles to take care as many of their own personal emails as possible, let alone pay attention to anybody else's emails. That doesn't occur.
And the only time those, that we've ever looked into anything along those lines have been as a result of a direct open records request that we have, we are required to fulfill.
I hear you maybe wanting the wording changed.
I would like to see the wording changed, perhaps mirror better than the actual board policy that talks about every document being subject to the open records law. I just find this very concerning. And I've had two staff members tell me, who are not into paranormal activity, although there are people who do, and I respect that. But they've pointed out that they're standing away from their mouse, as far as I am to the other side of this table, and the mouse is actually moving, and they are not anywhere near it. And I don't know what explains that activity, but perhaps someone monitoring that might explain that activity. At least, that's what they came to believe. So they were very dubious about what was being looked at and how, and what would explain that mouse just randomly going across the screen.
I've experienced that when my mouse pad was not even, and the mouse moved by itself from an uneven tray table.
I'm not talking about the mouse, I'm talking about the cursor, so.
The cursor moves with the mouse.
Same thing. We've had it happen in this boardroom as well, because if there's any interference with the RF signal between that and that computer, sometimes it will just move, or if the battery starts going out of it, so that can happen.
But nobody is, if a person is taking control of it, it is in consultation with the individual at the time who's trying to repair an item.
Usually, they are on the phone, or they're responding to their repair request, and they have taken control of the system at that time. That's pretty rare. Usually, that's only when you reimage a machine here.
Well, then, I would request that that sentence beginning, "Staff use of technology can be monitored at any time", be modified so that it reflects the policy and is written in a more positive manner. As Sue had suggested, that everything was subject to open record laws and so on.
Right. All right. Other comments?
Oh, I do have one other one. Page 21 in the handbook. I've had some rather interesting and lengthy conversations with two staff members, and I've had a total of five conversations with four. And I've had a total of five conversations with four administrators and the person who heads up the district wellness committee over the biometric screening. I think one of the concerns has been the inconsistency in the responses as to what is the purpose of the biometric screening? What is the end in mind and can that be achieved in other ways? That particular phrase has, has led to the departure of one long-term employee, which I find disturbing. Secondly, another staff member had spoken to me recently about the biometric screening. Someone who has a health issue, she deals with it on a regular basis with her physician. She finds the telephonic conference to be very intrusive with someone referencing the numbers in her blood work. When her, she and her physician have been talking about that, he's well aware of what's going on, doesn't view it as the concern that the person on the other end of the phone did. The five percent was not as much of an issue as there being some other way that people could demonstrate that they were attending to their health issues without subjecting to this. And I, one of the people told me, well, we save money by going through this, this company. That was questioned then by this, this second person I talked to saying, but if my physician, which he does, wants me to redo that blood work, for example, then the district pays twice. So I just question here if we can define what the end is in mind and if there could be some other means to show that people are attending for their health issues. And I'm well aware that when people don't attend to health issues, costs are greater later on. So I'm not trying to avoid that, I'm not trying to be critical of the need for health screening and regular checkups. But I'm questioning if this is the only means that can be demonstrated to assist staff with those issues.
I think, well, a lot of districts are going this route. I mean, private sectors going this route and have been for a long time. And we're not alone in the five percent is, ranges across the board from some districts of doing a differentiation of three percent to up to twelve percent. So, and a lot of districts are going this route. There are even a couple of districts that are going a step further and making the differential based on the results of the biometric screening. The national healthcare allows that, but you have to allow people a way to make those points back. You know, I think if, as we continue to look at an onsite clinic or a near-site clinic, maybe we can start having some of those discussions. But you know, we have twelve hundred people under our health insurance. And to be able to allow people to do different things will become unmanageable. Even if, even letting your doctor, have your results at your doctor and have your doctor send your results in, they may not do the same tests that we do. And then also trying to collate and gather twelve hundred different tests from different doctors, even if it's just a handful of people who do it themselves, it's just much more cost-effective to have us do it. We use the information for doing professional development. We use the information to look at, you know, what are, what are some of our needs going down the road? What kind of classes can we have for people, what should we be targeting? So it's beneficial to the district, we don't get any individual data by any means. We don't get any of the results of the phone calls or anything. I think it just heightens people's awareness. As far as the response of double cost, I know when I get my results, I carry those to my doctor and my doctor accepts them. Now, if your doctor chooses to do those tests again, I mean, that is incurring another cost. But it is, I guess it's something we have to, have to work on educating our employees on. But the majority of the people, you know, can you consider how many people have to do this? And the fact that you only get a few phone calls, then the majority of the people are doing it and it's fine. And I think it gives us some valuable information.
My end was three. But these people were very concerned.
If we have that level of satisfaction or acceptance, I think we're, and I understand the frustration with it. It's one of those cases also where we're following a trend with fellow school districts, but we're also frankly, the public expects us and we frankly end up in our, in our publics who pay attention to what we contribute and what we pay in health insurance. And our biggest cost driver that's not in our control is health insurance and on an annual basis. And if the feedback I have that people understand that we're doing this as a, as a wise determiner to reduce the propensity of expanded healthcare expenses in the future is, is a critical issue. And so many times we're told, well, why aren't you running schools more like businesses? Well, this is one of those cases that we, along with a lot of other school districts, are trying to follow that example with relatively low impact on our employees. And if we were, if we were to deal with from a standpoint of, according, three out of twelve hundred covered, to change every policy, we probably wouldn't be able to accomplish very many things. And this is one of those that is a low-impact issue that I think is very valuable long-term to the district. And in the future, we, we will certainly have to face other ways of preventing increase in health insurance costs.
I think there's a lot of people who don't have a primary care physician or go to the doctor. So if these tests discover someone who's diabetic or prediabetic or someone who has high blood pressure, high cholesterol and didn't know it, this can save money in the.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Next on our workshops is Strategic Compensation Design Team. This will be a joint leadership. We have four individuals who've been the administrative representatives to this, this work. We are dealing with, without, of course, Mike this evening, but our other three leaders, remaining leaders are a party to this presentation tonight. We also have, as I look around, we have a number of members of the teachers who are present who have been a party to long hours and lots of days of work relating to this subject and are also here this evening.
Thank you, so we're going to kick off our Strategic Compensation Explore and Design Team presentation. And so it's our, our privilege to unveil to you tonight many, many hours of work from a design team. And we'll go over how many hours and actually our, our members that are here to support us this evening. We have Kim Brown, Director of Learning, Sushnoor, Executive Director of Business Administration. Business Services. And I'm Julie Mosher, Director of Curriculum and Assessment. And we, I'm really proud to introduce members of our Explore and Design Team. And if we go to there, our Explore and Design Team consisted of twenty-three members, fifteen teachers from all three levels, including people services and instructional support, seven administrators, one board member, Steve Eliason. And our design team members that we are going to introduce that are here with us tonight have contributed over sixty-five hours to this process. And so we really want to thank, thank them for doing that and also for coming this evening to support us. And we have behind us here Heidi Wheaton, Mandy Potrats, Gabby Graham-Bort, Mary Juckum, Brian Wilson, Joe Wagner, James Warren, Deb Hilcher, Maggie Weiss, John Ryland, and Jill Pascarella, who served on this design team. And so we really want to thank them for being here tonight as well as our other design team members that have contributed to this process. In addition to that, we have a subcommittee of our four district administrators. We've, we've met for over forty-five hours continuing to work on this. And we also had our sub-design team members that broke off and contributed another nine hours. So as you can see, we have really vetted through this process. And we are hoping that you will recognize that we were trying to keep it simple, understandable, sustainable, going forward and also holding all of us accountable to high standards. Going back a little bit, we want to remind everyone that why are we doing this? And the traditional professional salary system is, is not affordable, so we knew this. So when we got into our strategic plan, goal area one B, we really knew that we needed to formulate this plan and thus this has been a major component within our strategic plan. We also have recognized and had, have had board workshops and discussion about data about attrition in the first five years or so due to less salaries than our neighboring school districts. And we are hoping that you will recognize that. We have addressed that in this compensation piece. And the traditional salary system has not been reviewed for decades. And we will hope, we also hope you will recognize that we have stepped away from our traditional steps and lanes that have been in place for, for decades within the education system. Going forward, we did consult with Attelfer Kids to get started. And we collaborated with them, once again, along with Explore and Design Team. And also to remind from our previous presentation, we did look at models nationwide as well as, as within the state of Wisconsin as we informed our work. Once again, we looked at different research around human capital eligibility criteria for pay for performance. We looked at teacher incentive compensation plans as well as multiple measures for teacher development and evaluation. And you will see some of that we have chosen not to reflect in our compensation model and some of it we have reflected in our compensation model. As we went through, some, some of those compensation models gained traction, others were put off to the side. And that was based a lot on, as we scroll through here, some of our guiding principles. As a team, these were our guiding principles that have, have led us through and we have used throughout the whole process. First of all, our professional valuation will not be linked to the compensation model for purposes of varied pay increases. And that's an important note because we will talk about a piece that does change the landscape a little bit for compensation. Professional salaries will not decrease, we felt we really needed to honor our professionals in that way. Professional development is a key component for the growth of an organization. And we feel since we deal in human capital and we deal with student learning and improving people and we're a people organization that we needed to emphasize that. Professional valuation will be an eligibility requirement for entry into the compensation model. And once again, we'll review that and explain what that means as we go further into that. And the foundation of the compensation system shall be professional level-based salaries that are competitive with the valley and state. And so when you look into your staff reporter, into the board packet, also included in there was a majesty of CISA six salaries as well as some recent data that we gathered from human resource directors from comparable districts to help meet that guiding principle. And the compensation system must be transparent and easily understood. And this was one area that was, was pretty tricky. To keep something really simple and easy to understand tends to be a lot of complicated work on the backend. So when something looks really simple, just realize there was a lot of complicated work and discussions and, and really hard, really thinking and hard discussions that were behind this. So our results, as we said last time, was that the Appleton model that is currently, I believe, Kim, they're piloting it or they've already started up a little bit with it?
They use this year and now next year as their first year. So they, they kind of co-rated it in that fashion to try it out this year and to get going with it.
So we have collaborated quite a bit and Appleton has been quite generous in their collaboration with us as we started to explore this model with our design team. So going into this, we are going to go right into the draft of the compensation model and walk you through that. And I'm going to turn it over to Kim to get us started.
Yep, and so we're just going to go right, walk right through the compensation model and the draft of what this looks like. And here's our framework. And of course, it belongs or begins with our belief statement that every professional in the Oshkosh area school district contributes to the practice of teaching and learning through their area of expertise. And so of course, we want to develop that and that's why we really based it all around professional development. Our high-quality instruction does matter and we're just going to briefly go through those. Again, it's built upon collaboration that promotes professional growth to meet the needs of all students because we know that working together, we achieve more. We believe in high-quality instruction includes best practices which evolve as our understanding around student learning changes. And there has been a lot of brain research in the past few years and we are constantly learning and changing practices based on that. Oshkosh area school district also has high-quality educators consistently utilizing best practices to increase student engagement and achievement. And we know that engagement for students has to be high in order for them to learn. High-quality educators strive to grow their professional capacity to meet the needs of all students. That there is purposeful professional development contributes to high-quality instruction. And finally, the importance of individual and collective accountability for student growth. So those are our high-quality instruction beliefs that we have. Of course, you know that this is under our strategic plan priority one and specifically goal one B.
And I will speak real quick here. We know that when we implement, this is not going to be perfect and we're going to have to be, we're going to have to make adjustments. So the strategic compensation framework will be implemented as presented, or we're hoping this will be implemented as presented in this guide. We will be conducting an annual review of the compensation framework in the spring of each school year. And at the end of the annual review, we will bring forward recommends for changes, additions, or deletions to the framework will be brought to the Board of Education for consideration because we know, once again, this is not going to be perfect. We have tried to learn as much as possible from other school districts, other models in the nation, from our neighbor of North Appleton. But once again, it's going to have to be, how is this going to be implemented and how's this going to work within the Oshkosh area school district? So, so know that what exists today in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, after a review, if something's not working, we're going to need to make, we're going to need to make changes and we're going to do that through a, through a review process. The next part is the, if you recall from the guiding principles, is about eligibility criteria or entry criteria into the compensation framework. And we really believe that in the Oshkosh area school district, we have, you know, excellent professional educators. And we want to maintain that high level of accountability, that high level of quality. So professional educator must be in good standing in order to enter and progress through the OSD strategic compensation model. And what this means is a professional educator is in good standing when they have satisfactory performance and not on a plan of improvement. So to explain that, all of our professional educators are evaluated based on a, on the cycle. And for our, for our teaching staff, they fall under educator effectiveness. And one area of that, that they're evaluated on, or there's two areas they're evaluated on, they're evaluated on educator practice and they're evaluated on student outcome. Their educator practice is their, you know, their professionalism, their performance in the classroom, et cetera. Once again, we have very high-quality teachers and high-quality instruction going on in the Oshkosh area school district. But at times, we may have unsatisfactory performance. And so when, when there are red flags, when there are areas of concern with performance in the educator effectiveness framework or the framework for teaching, there are ratings one, two, three, and four. And one is your lowest rating. And so if an educator is consistently getting, getting ones or there are red flags, we will have the educator come out of the evaluation system and they are placed on a plan of improvement where we have very specific goals and areas that need to be improved. And we put together supports and things in place to make sure we can, we can help that educator or help that employee. It doesn't matter if it's a, an educator could be a support employee, grow through that process. And if improvements are made and performance is back up to satisfactory, they come off the plan of improvement and they go back into, for the, for the professional educator back into the compensation framework. And we will have that like clearly laid out, how that entrance and exit comes in there. We want to, we want to keep in mind that we have, we have employees that go on plans of improvement. And the majority of the time, they, they need that and they move forward. And we do the things we need to do and other times they don't and, and we move forward with that also. But we really feel, once again, that this is, we have high-quality instruction within the Oshkosh area school district, we have high-quality educators and we want to maintain that and honor, honor that within our compensation framework. So I'm going to pause because I think a couple of our board members had a couple of questions on good standing, or I hope I explained that.
I, I had questions about what good standing was and that makes sense, what you've just described. I do have a question as to who then is evaluating the teachers? Is it their building principal?
It is their, it is their building principal or a building administrator. So at the high school level, it could be an assistant principal. But it would be a licensed administrator would be evaluating the educator. And that is a requirement under, under educator effectiveness and state statute.
And so, I'm going to say it again. So once they're in good standing, they get to jump into the compensation model?
Correct. If they're, if they're on a plan of improvement.
Then they're not going to play.
Then they're frozen.
Okay.
And once again, going back to our guiding principles, at no time are we expecting a professional educator to slide back in salary. We're not, we don't believe in being punitive, we believe in growing our professionals and so they would be frozen.
Okay, thank you.
Would you believe that the administrator would then work in consultation with somebody here to work?
Absolutely, there is no plan of improvement that's put in. There is no plan of improvement that's put in place in the Ashkasharia School District without direct consultation with human resources.
The valuation takes place once a year?
For initial educators, evaluation takes place in years one, two, and three, and that's state requirement. Then after that, in the educator effectiveness process, then it's every three years. But please keep in mind that our administrators are in classrooms and doing walkthroughs in the educator effectiveness evaluation system. Educators are required to do a student learning objective, they're required to set a SMART goal each year. And so we're holding our educators to high standards. So, and also to keep in mind that when we talk about plans of improvement or good standing, we're talking a very small percentage of our professional, our professional staff. Very small percentage.
And I think we should clarify that even in the, in between years, that if serious deficits are occurring in the classroom, that at any point in time, that evaluation pattern can be kicked into place because the standards are not being met. So it doesn't take waiting three years to the next time off cycle to return an educator back to needing, being on an improvement plan.
And I want to emphasize that that type of, that type of cycle is for all of our staff in the Ashkasharia School District, whether they're a professional educator, support staff, et cetera, that we do evaluation for all of our employees.
What would, what would kick in something like that between a, between a three-year cycle?
For example, serious deficits regarding outcome and performance, monitoring the, what happened with test scores on a given year, classroom control issues, inappropriate behaviors or relationship really guarding the classroom as a whole, as the teacher's ability to manage, control the class, making normal progress.
Probably things the principal would hear about through parents.
Made through parents, but may be observed by the continuous walkthroughs through buildings and observing that. And in some cases, frankly, things get picked up by colleagues, that they get concerned that a individual is struggling and what needs to be done with that. And a department leader may be in that position to see that, but even a grade-level colleague may notice things are not holding together well and what needs to be done. And sometimes, you know, some of those issues, you may discover that you need additional support, maybe there's a crisis in the, in the teacher's family life. There are all kinds of reasons that could cause that, or there could be illness, or there could be other issues that cause that to occur. All that's part of the diagnosis. So it is not, there are multiple sources of how that can occur.
The other portion of this is to keep in mind, once again, this is a very small percentage because in the Ashkasharia School District, we have a pretty rigorous hiring criteria. And we look to attract and retain the best talent possible. And so when you design a system and when you look at evaluation and you, and you look at the compensation model that we have put together, you always put things in place that value your best and your brightest. And we feel like we have a really awesome, if we want to put it that way, professional education staff, so professional educator staff. So yes, do we have accountability measures? Yes, will we address things when they need to be addressed? But once again, this is really about growing our professional educators, honoring and compensating that and moving forward. And I'm going to turn it over to Kim to go on to the next part.
All right. We're going to go over the district point guidelines. And part of this you heard about last time, but we'll just do a refresher. Everything, the professional development as far as looking at district points, they would have to fall under one of four pillars. And the four pillars that we have are effective instruction and assessment, integrating technology, disciplinary content literacy. And again, when we say disciplinary content literacy, that means that we are doing our reading, writing, speaking, listening through all of our content areas. And then of course, supporting the social and emotional growth. So those are the four pillars that things would have to fall under. As far as how educators can earn their 35 district points each year, variety of things. It can be attending and actively participating in pre-approved professional offerings. And you'll see in a moment what that looks like. We're asking that things go first to me so that I can see what it is and how it falls into one of the four pillars. And then from there, other things that they can do is present or facilitate the professional learning opportunities. They also can document the evidence of sharing new learning with colleagues because we do want them, if they go to a workshop and they have learned something fabulous that's going to help our students move forward, we want them sharing that information with others and this is a way that, that can be done.
So it's reviewed by you first or it's reviewed by the principal and then you?
It goes to me first.
Okay.
And we'll go through that.
And district-wide?
Yes.
They'd all be coming to you?
Yeah.
And we'll go through that work for the whole process.
And like we said, we are going to be learning as we go through the process, but right now we have a data developer who's trying to help make it electronic so that things are faster. We do not want to be all paper. We want it to be coming in, submit, go into kind of a holding pattern. And then the principals would document that, yes, this has happened. And then it would go to HR for putting it into place, so.
And part of the reason for that is as well to maintain a constant universal district standard as opposed to it varying building to building, which is, could create inequities.
Correct.
Can I just ask, what would, I see just on the outside that that would potentially become a bottleneck, even if it's not paper and it's electronic, I see multiple layers of bureaucracy. And so I wonder if, I guess my knee-jerk reaction is, why don't we just tell everybody what we, what we expect? And then let's just expect everybody to follow it. In other words, could we remove the bureaucracy? And then if it becomes a problem, then we start to put some of these safeguards in place? I don't know. I'm asking. When I do professional development for my company, I don't have to ask. I just tell and I make my case and then I go. But we're small and we aren't subject to open records, so that helps. I mean, I'm just saying that I see a lot of work for you, I see a lot of work for HR, I see a lot of work for the principals, and we're already overworked here.
Yes, we are.
So that's my.
So you're trying to make it to where the educators are more accountable to?
And is not appropriate.
Is there a way to put it through a system, but it not have to go through all this approval?
Well, or can't we just tell teachers what we want and then expect them to do it?
Well, I think the points have to get totaled so that then they know to go to that next stage, the next column.
We have to find a way to track the points. Okay, so that's fine, but okay, all right.
That's the part, if we could figure out a clean way to do that.
But this is, this was saying that we had to pre-approve the professional development. So I was saying, can we just not pre-approve it?
And I think it's just to start to get people to understand what those four pillars really mean.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's really what it is about, is making sure it falls under one of those four pillars. When I talk to Appleton, there's times where somebody wants to do something, but it really has nothing to do with one of those four pillars. And they're going, yeah, but I'll be learning. Right, but we really want it, I mean, that's what we were talking about as a team, is to really make sure we hit one of those areas. So perhaps in time, things that we would like to do to make it easier though, is we've already started having conversations with people saying, if this is approved, then we want to work with the Fox Valley Reading Council or the Fox Valley Writing Project or whoever it is, when they offer things in the evening or after school, we'd like to meet with them ahead of time to say, this is going to be district-approved. So put it on your advertisement saying this would be district-approved for blank district points, because I think that will help with some of the questioning as we go forth.
I do see some merit in having a preapproval only in that you won't have a lot of pissed-off educators saying, geez, you know, I went and did this and now they won't even accept it.
I guess I saw it as demeaning.
Oh.
I saw it really as insulting, that I'm a professional, a lot of our educators have master's degrees, and then they have to get approved for development. I don't know. That was my knee-jerk.
Let me use the example of the Minnesota Licensed Renewal System that I managed for two and a half years for all 5,700 licensed administrators in the state of Minnesota. That will include principals, superintendents, special ed directors, and community ed directors. The system established a renewal unit where preapproval was sought for a topic to be taught and the presenter could present it and get preapproval from my office of which met the content and criteria. Once that was established and a person took that sequence of training, that became one of the listed approved programs. And then the 32 people who participated in would not then have to, they would, it would be an automatic because you generate a list of approved offerings.
Okay.
With this, we're really starting from scratch in not having a determined set meeting that criteria and having that. Once the set of approved offerings and choices are established, now, there are many times people develop very creative ideas of making their own development plan that really don't meet the criteria. It's pretty hard for, for a principal who is probably not taught in the classroom, social studies for 20 years, demonstrate to, to me that a two-week trip to Greece is going to be a benefit to their educational advancement as a, as a principal.
And that's a Minnesota example, correct?
Yeah, that's, but, but, but that, those are the things when those come into effect and, you know. But, but if an individual is taking part in a regional development activity that has been requested and pre-approved for X number of point units for doing that, you develop then a kind of a directory of established pre-approved programs of which then every program does not have to be approved after the first year. You'll generate a set that would be in Kim's hands to deal with as automatic. So the volume will decrease after the first two or three years because, except for those who are the most creative folks who wanted to come up with some unique way of advancing themselves that has limited value that, or may have great value, but it still would have to be reviewed individually. But every case would not have to be reviewed after it's been established as it meeting that criteria. And, and as Kim suggested, that the preapproval of that, asking that the presenter and the provider of the information obtain preapproval for the content of that offering and then it becomes an established one.
And we'll, oh, go ahead, Steve.
I guess I applaud the idea. From what I see, I mean, the way that educators were, the job description they had 25 years ago has gone out the window. There is so much more to do. And the same with the parrot pros and everybody else, and we're especially in regards to special needs children. This is one of the things that I actually was trying to promote for the last few years about creating district, what do we value in this district? And that needs to be defined and you guys have got four pillars here. I understand what Stan's saying and that makes complete sense to have, you start from day one and you create a district-approved list of professional development opportunities. I understand what Allison's saying too about the bureaucracy. God knows, I don't need, we don't need more bureaucracy. And what I do in my real job, we'll have people come up and ask, well, can we go to do something like this? And a lot of times, they expect us to pay for it, it comes out of our education fund. And it is reviewed prior to. And unless they can bring it back to our group and show the value that it actually does fit into what we're trying to do in a synergistic format, what's the point? And I think we, you know, if the person wants to go out and they're an art teacher and they can sell the point that they really want to learn about fractal geometry in regards to geology, that's, that's cool. And you probably could actually get an art teacher to do that. But we do need to have some parameters on this and I think that this is a good way to start it, I really do.
Thank you. And so there, you know, there can be district-approved things like that. There also can be opportunities for teachers to come forth. And let's say, you know, this year, we're going to be doing the Lucy Hawkins Words of Study Writing. And so, am I calling that correct? Units of study.
Units of study and writing.
That's what I meant to say, units of study and writing. And so they might be wanting to come together and say, look, I have scored my kids with this rubric and you've scored your kids, let's take a look and trade off and take a look at the student work and what are you doing in your classroom because my kids are here. And I think there can be some great collaborative discussions as we go forth too, especially when we're trying out new things.
Do you see this as being kind of seamless with the PDPs teachers have to do to renew their licensing?
Right. We're trying to get everything to flow in the same direction.
Exactly. And so that goes back to when we originally said, we're trying to keep it as simple and as streamlined as possible. And so if we're all pulling in the same direction, we're, you know, we're aligning up those forces.
Anything with streamlined process.
Yep, exactly. They absolutely, these types of components can be written into a PDP. And especially the collaborative piece of it, when you fill that out, who you're going to collaborate with, what are those activities in the period of time that it goes over. In addition, you're going to see a lot of these things are going to be met in the educator effectiveness piece and going to help teachers meet and score higher and be rated higher in those, in the framework of teaching and within those domains. And the other thing is, is the bottom line is, is we want to improve student learning. And so those four pillars you're going to see reflected in our strategic plan and in the things that we really want to enhance and strengthen within our classrooms.
One of the last points on here is the district points we would look at between July 1st and June 30th for each school year, realizing that if this is okayed, you know, in the future, we realize that we're, we're missing a window of opportunity. So we would need to pro-rate those district points in some way. And we will figure that out when we know more about exactly when we can implement. So just wanting you to know that we thought about that. We did say that district points must be earned during non-contracted school hours or during a personal day. Some people do take a personal day in order to attend a workshop. And if they take a personal day, we feel like that would be advantageous to us and them in order to earn district points. And then you'll find out later a little bit more about the master's degree doctorate, national board certification, how that will be recognized. And so we'll be walking us through that when we look at our salary matrix. So, and here's just some other ways that people can earn district points, workshop trainings, conferences, institutes, book studies, college coursework, facilitating professional learning opportunities, or contributing to building district or school community. And I'll get to that in this next section here. So we talked about, there can be things that are going to be happening in district that we definitely want people to attend and hope that they do because of course, it's in line with where we are going as a district. And so we said workshops, coursework, book studies, pillar-generated topics led by individuals, grade level, subject-specific site, and district-wide cross-curricular teams. Out of district, same type of thing that we've had in the past is workshops, conferences, and coursework, of course, outside of our professional day or as part of a personal day. And then this last part was a part that came up as people started talking about the contributions that they make to the building or the district or the school community in general. And so what we talked about is that they could earn a maximum of 10 district points per year for doing some of the things that take additional time. Taking a student, teacher, and intern, that can take up a lot of time to help mentor them. If you are leading a STEM night for the school, there's a lot of preparation that goes into that. Some of our staff members are fabulous in attending the PTO nights and really being that liaison between the teachers and the school or even being a PDP reviewer. So those are just some examples. But there are some things that are happening in the school that we hail the teachers for doing. They're fabulous things that are either helping our profession or helping our students and families. And so that's why we have that contribution piece there.
I'd like to see that piece expanded and maybe you've talked about this, but I know over the years, we've had some really outstanding and phenomenal educators who have taken groups of students abroad. I'm speaking specifically of the German Exchange Program with either Rüsselsheim or Wiesbaden. We've just heard in the superintendent's report about this group that went to Costa Rica. I think teachers ought to be able to earn points for preparation work they put into that, they're on the job 24/7 for seven to 10, 14 days when they're with those students. And when you talk about contributions and you talk about the person learning content, I do think it ties in with the, with the, at least the first pillar. It probably could also tie in to the second one on integrating technology and that the teachers could bring back things. So I like what I see and I really appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I'd like to see some things that are more outside the box for teachers. I'd like to see, for example, teachers being able to demonstrate their learning, not by going to another workshop or another, taking another course, but if, I'm not going to name names, but I know we have teachers in this district who are largely self-taught in, in a lot of their technology background. And why should they need to sit through a course? They could probably teach the course or the workshop. They could probably teach the course or the workshop. But if they could demonstrate, for example, how to use a whiteboard, and here are the specific objectives that they need to, to meet, I think they ought to be able to do that without sitting through a course and a workshop or necessarily lead one. But let's give, let's give life experience for prior learning. And it really individualizes. We talk about individualizing education for kids. We should be looking at individualizing this for students. And I know you have with the options you have, but I see those as being fairly traditional. I'd like to be a little bit more innovative in terms of what teachers can do and have accepted.
And we're hoping, like, as you talked about, some of the people who are self-taught and they have contributed great things to their classrooms, we're hoping that some of them will be the presenters and present to other teachers. And that's why further down, I'll just kind of jump down right here. We talk about if you are truly doing a presentation, not just leading a collaboration, but truly doing a presentation, that you could earn double points because we really do want people to share their learning and knowledge. So, we try to think about that as well. All right. And so, then the rules for district points, we talked about you need to complete thirty-five hours worth of professional development beyond the school day in order to receive the compensation stipend. In order to re, you have to, of course, we talked about being in good standing. And you have, must have a thirty-five hour completed in three-year cycle. And that's to be in good standing. So, but what we expect is we want every teacher to do thirty-five hours each year. But we'll talk about some of the teachers who are, you know, in the, in the, their later years of teaching and what that looks like for them when we get to the salary matrix. Of course, we talked about it being related to the four pillars and that we do want the paperwork submitted at least two weeks prior because we want to make sure that we have time to look at that information ahead of time. And then we went through and looked at some of the points and what that would look like. You'll notice the credit, or the credits for courses, we gave ten, twenty, and thirty. And I just want to share some of the thinking that went behind that. We didn't do the full fifteen per credit because one of the members actually said, you know, we want to be careful that we don't want it to just be about credits because there might be something that's outstanding that we want people to participate during the school year. And if you can earn it all in taking a course, you've missed that opportunity. And so, that actually came from our group saying, let's, let's think about that differently. And so, that's how they came up with that amount of points. Other than that, you know, the professional development, we talked about one point per hour. And then, of course, we talked about the presentation that you can get double points for the first time presenting new information. We realize that sometimes you can almost take your show on the road. So, the first time, there's a lot of preparation into getting ready. And then the second time, it doesn't take as much time. So, that's why we want offered double points if they offered that again. If that makes sense. And then this is what the preapproval request form looks like for eligibility. And again, we're hoping that this will be electronic so that they can fill in their information in which learning pillar it falls under. And then, the specific information depending on what they are looking into. And then the rationale. And then that would-
Why is there a question mark after university? None of the others have a question?
I think that's a typo that we had in that draft. We just didn't take it off.
Okay. I just wondered why it wasn't across the board then.
It's gone. Thank you. I didn't even notice it till just now. So, yeah, so those are, are, as we've talked about, these are some of the different areas and what they would fill out so that we know what's happening and that that would be submitted. And then the second piece is the verification of district points. And that's where, you know, this was the offering, this is, and this is what actually happened. And then how did you apply that learning and how did you share that learning? So, it's kind of the reflection piece that we've had in the past for professional development opportunities. When teachers are able to go to a workshop, they fill out a sheet afterwards. That would replace, this would replace that.
So, when you think, when you think about not doing something in addition to our other system of applying for a workshop, that kind of thing, and then doing the reflection, that, that piece, that paperwork would, would go away and be replaced by this. And once again, our hope is that it's all electronic.
Right. I just have a question. I was at the education committee when the elementary task force was there. You guys were there. And, and the, and I talked to teachers out in, you know, the community as well. And, you know, the, the issue for all of them, whatever, whether you're elementary, middle, or high, is that everybody is burning out and that there's all this burden all the time and their plates are full. And so, I see an extra thirty-five hours and I'm thinking, how and when? And, and, and so, we're, we have more testing coming at them. They have their SMART goals. We, you know, may or may not increase, increase student loads on them. So, I wonder, and, and I'm not saying that this, this is no reflection of this work. I just wonder where they're going to find more hours in their day. And I don't know as a team how that was addressed. And I just, I don't know. I'm worried. I'm a good worrier.
Well, I can say that some of the teachers are already meeting outside of their time and they are putting in and doing some fabulous things for students and for their schools. And they're, right now, not getting-
They're not being compensated.
Right. And so, in a way, it'll be really helpful for those teachers who already are doing some of those type of things. I know there, there was a group that was working this summer on several things that would have definitely qualified in some of these areas. So-
Well, it says that they have to be in good standing. They have to do thirty-five hours in three years.
There's thirty-five hours per year, but to be in good standing, like, let, if somebody chooses-
Let's say they do nothing.
Right. They do nothing because I choose not to do anything. Or maybe it's just a year where, you know, I had a baby and I just can't do it. And that, you know, we get, we understand that. So, in three years, you have to do thirty-five district points to be in good standing. But if you actually want to move on the matrix, it would be thirty-five hours per year.
Okay. So, they could do nothing and just freeze?
Correct.
And have babies and everything's okay. Okay. Got it.
Or maybe choose not to. I mean, there could be other, yeah, maybe there could be other factors. So-
But we understand that sometimes things happen in people's lives and it might, might not be possible for one year.
Okay. So, it's not punitive. It's just, you don't got to.
And going back to lining things up, once again, we're, we, we talked a lot about designing this for our best and our brightest and what are best practices. And we really want to be honoring the things that our, our teachers are already, are already doing and that are lined up. This is just going to be recognizing and evaluating those things that they're doing.
Thanks.
One question. And I think one of the things that you said last time was being collaborative and not competitive. How do you see this as being collaborative and not competitive?
I, I guess everything that's in here. Because if you are sharing your learning, you're, you're getting better at doing that. If you are looking at student work and that's what you decide to look at, you are sharing, what am I, what's working for me, what's working for you, so that you grow as a team. I see all of it being more collaborative than competitive.
So, I mean, I'm kind of tired tonight. I'm not thinking real fast. So, I understand that part. But, so, so the teacher goes out and attends a class or workshop and they get points for that. Now, they can come back to the district and present what they learned to a group of teachers and they get points for that as well.
Correct.
Do the people that they present to get points?
Yes.
Sure.
Yep.
If it's off-school time.
Yep.
If it's off-school time. But I'm wondering, it probably, you have to be off-school time. You're teaching when you're in school.
Right.
So, okay. So, that's the collaborative part that I'm kind of looking at.
Yes. No, good question. Thank you for asking. Because I wouldn't want anybody not to have gotten that piece. So, thank you.
Are you going to go over the salary schedule?
We are going to do that next. Do you have any questions, additional questions on this piece?
Uh, well, I was assuming that it's all part of the same presentation. So-
All right. I have to go here. So, I guess.
At the end of the staff.
Yep, it's here. I have it. It's just I didn't.
Um, in the, in your, in the staff report was a proposed salary matrix. Also in the staff report, it's told about some things that are different and some things different from the current matrix. The going down, they're called point levels. They're not steps. So, they have no reflection of a person's years of service. They're a point level. So, you, you go down a point level, if you achieve thirty-five points in a, in a, in a calendar year or in a, in a school year, the next year you would go down a point level. So, that is kind of the rationale. The thing that we want to look at changing from even when this was put together is the, is the column headings. People are getting a little confused by the initial educator. So, I think maybe we're going to look at making that column one. And then, so then there's five columns. And so, because of the way we transition from the, the current schedule to the new schedule, there are going to be people who are put in the initial educator column that are not initial educators. And we'll address that. The whole rationale is we have to get our starting salary up. So, what this does is it cuts the first three and a half steps off our current salary schedule and starts at the current step four. And it also values the, the fact that a person, once they're hired, they grow the most in their first five years. They're learning. They're coming right out of college. They're growing the most in their first five years. So, a point level increase for a, a new teacher would be approximately a thousand dollars a year. The point value increase for the other levels are at eight hundred dollars a year. We want to, and eight hundred dollars is, is a number that I just felt was sustainable. And I want to say upfront that, that is not, it's not ideal. We don't like the fact that there are so many point levels to get to the highest level of the matrix. But at the same time, in our current salary schedule that we have now, the step values range anywhere from about twelve hundred dollars at the bachelor end to over seventeen hundred dollars at the, at the master's end. It just totally was not sustainable. We froze people on their step for the last three years because giving that kind of a step increase is not sustainable. So, we needed to come up with a, a point level increase that was at least, in my mind, sustainable. That's where the eight hundred dollars came up, came up with. And that also appears to be, now granted, districts are all, all over the place in developing new salary schedules. But that appears to be in the ballpark of what some others have, have, have given for annual increments. But again, it can be a work in progress. If school finance changes at the state level and we're all of a sudden flush with money, we can revise the salary schedule. I mean, so it's, it can be a work in progress. As Julie already said, every year we'll be evaluating this.
And how do you move from column to column? And why does column two overlap two years with D and E of the person?
A couple, a couple different things. On this column, there is no years in, in, anywhere in this matrix. It's point levels. And you, and you shift over a stipend for a master's degree, national board certification, et cetera. So, there, there are no years anywhere within, within this matrix. The, the second point is, is that all of our professional educators are going to have to be taken and placed on, on this matrix. And once they're placed there, then we are going to look at then at, you know, where they are. And then honoring master's degree, which pushes them over to a column, or honoring a national board certification, which is an additional three thousand, et cetera. So, it's like there, there is nowhere on here that you have another year of service within the Ashkashiri School District. You move. It's the thirty-five district points gets you to a new, to the next point level.
Correct.
Okay. And once again, a master's degree moves you over a column, three thousand dollars. Let's say I have a bachelor's degree and I earn a national board. That moves you three thousand dollars. If I do my masters and a couple of years later I do my national board, it moves you three thou, it moves you over three thousand dollars. But to get a point level, you have to earn thirty-five points each year.
So, so the new teacher coming in at thirty-seven, four seventy-five, that's not an automatic jump to next year. They've got to earn those thirty-five points.
I guess the best way of looking at it is, is to start, to transition to this. Current people are going to be put wherever is closest to their current number. Now, unless they're in steps one through three and a half, they'll be moved, moved down to a starting point. But everybody else is just going to be placed at a number that's closest to their current salary, but gives them at least a hundred dollar increase.
Right. Closest up.
Closest up. Right. If no one, no one will-
Nobody goes back.
No one will go back. So, closest to their current salary with at least a hundred dollar raise. So, that means the raises are going to range from a hundred dollars to possibly over eight hundred because if someone is within a hundred dollars of the step here, they'll go to the next point level. So, to transition, people are going to be kind of placed anywhere that's closest to their number with some parameters. We do have some parameters. We're trying to keep everyone with a bachelor's degree in, in what I call currently column one, which I think will be making column two. Anybody with a master's degree has been put in column two. And anybody with a master's plus thirty. The very last column on our current salary schedule will, will be put in column three. No one is currently being placed in column four. But then, as it transitions and as we have new hires, they'll go from the initial educator to column one. And then, as they get a master's or a board certified, they get a three thousand dollar increase. And that would, that's what bumps them over to the next column. So, I don't know if I would look so much at, I have the columns so that we actually have a matrix. We thought about doing stipends and calling the three thousand dollars stipend. But when you have, you know, almost nine hundred teachers, there needs to be a system. There needs to be someplace to, to put them for, for payroll purposes, for costing purposes, for budgeting purposes. So, it really is a three thousand dollar increase if you get the masters or the national boards or an advanced degree. It's just the columns have, retain the, the, the look of a matrix for payroll purposes.
So, I just want to make sure I'm clear on it. If you're an initial educator, the reason that you've got that separated is obviously because you're moving them up or you're, you're granting them a, a larger increase for their thirty-five points.
Correct.
In A, B, C, D, and E, then they would automatically move to column one, what's currently labeled column one.
Correct. If they get the thirty-five points that year.
If they continue to get thirty-five points.
Correct.
If they received their masters or if they received national board certification, they would move to column two.
Correct.
If they received the other, they would move to column three. And what moves them to column four?
Or is right now like an advanced degree, PhD.
So, so for example, this is for, this is for all of our professional educators. We have school psychologists. We also have physical therapists, occupational therapists. And currently to be a licensed physical therapist within a school, PhDs are now required. Or a school psychologist is EDS. So, there is these advanced degrees that are required to even have that license or hold that position. And so, we need to have that category, that, that column or the ability to be able to, to envision and place that person within our professional educator salaries.
Where did the national board certified people fall then?
It's going, it's going to depend if they have a mass, if they have a masters.
Okay.
So, let's say I'm a, I'm an educator and I have my bachelor's degree. And I'm going, okay, I, I want to, I want to move forward. I want to better myself. They could choose to go after their national board and that would move them three thousand dollars. Or I could choose to go after my master's degree and that would move me up three thousand dollars. Let's say I'm a currently a master, I have a master's degree. I want to move with three thousand dollars. I'm going to go for my national boards because we really want to honor and compensate those things that, that lead to increased student learning within classrooms.
If you have a PhD but you don't have your national board, are you in column three instead of four?
Probably.
Okay. Well, I just, I mean, you know, they're talking about masters, national boards, PhDs. But if you don't have one-
Well, and the other thing is just remember, columns are just to help us, you know, calculate and have a coordinate to put, to help with payroll. It's really, you get your master's degree, three thousand dollar increase. If you get your national boards in addition to that, it's another three thousand dollars increase. I want to, I want to earn an additional eight hundred dollars. I'm going to earn thirty-five district points to move down a level. So, that's, that's how I, that's how I, that's how I earn more. That's how I grow myself as a professional. And that's how I move in the Ashkashiri School District.
Just a quick question. What if an educator gets thirty points in a year or something happens? They're sick and they aren't able to finish up their last five? Nothing. What if they get their next five within, doesn't matter. So, they did all that work for them?
We spent a lot of time talking about that and decided it's just, like you said, bureaucracy and paperwork. We're already as a team concerned about the level of paperwork. And we finally decided as a group not to let points carry over. But again, but then, but also if it's the individual situation, you're at thirty-three points and you went into labor the day you were supposed to go to a professional development.
Why do we, why do we keep using babies as?
Okay, you have thirty-three points and you got into a bike accident. I think the district will work with people on an individual basis, but the premise is you have to get your thirty-five in the given year. And the reason we, you say you have to have thirty-five over in three years is there's people who lot them out on the schedule.
Correct.
Correct.
And so then they could say, well, why would I do any professional development, I bottomed out.
Sure.
Or topped out, however you want to look at it. And so that's why we added the requirement that you have to have at least thirty-five points over.
Because once again, the premise is high quality instruction matters and we want you to grow as a professional.
Okay.
Is there any significance to the, what I perceive as the heavier line below FF?
The heavier line is if you look on here, it's the box that contained the draft.
Yeah, so when I went and put draft, it messed up my.
No, I'm not being critical, I was just wondering if there was some significance.
No, there was no significance. I was going to wipe that draft out.
That's okay.
Have you guys, just from a pragmatic side, have you guys run any of this by payroll or will this be fairly seamless?
Well, not like it's going to be seamless, it's going to take some time to actually, you know, I've already charted out where, obviously where people are in the current matrix and where they would fall in this matrix. But yeah, it's going to be work for payroll and we're going to have to redo the whole matrix in Skyward. But the way the payroll system is, because it's a matrix, and if we can point people to a box, then they're always going to be, so then payroll would then run with having those indicators, like you would have indicators for each of these boxes as a label and each person then has a label as to which box they follow.
Right, like an employee ID number or whatever, right?
Right. So it'd be like point level R, column two, column three, so they would, like right now our circulant, people are level BA zero zero, BA twelve, step thirteen, whatever. So this would have the same kind of coordinates that would attach to.
So it'll take a lot of upfront, but once it happens upfront, it should be.
Correct. The other piece that we have to do upfront is we know who has gotten their national board certification, but we do not necessarily know who's gotten their masters in the last couple of years, because that's not something we've had to track. So that's another piece that we're going to have to collect.
If you remember last year, the board had approved recognizing, you know, legacy credits, et cetera, getting people caught up. And that was effective through December fifteenth, two thousand and twelve. And so since December fifteenth, two thousand and twelve, learning hasn't stopped and educators have proceeded with, you know, obtaining their master's degrees and their national boards. But once again, national boards are documented, that would be another piece of the processes we would have to seek out, you know, who's earned their master's degree and make sure that they're compensated and honored within this too.
So you've done, I mean, fabulous job here, lots of really well thought out, good work. I like the way you've got the four pillars and connected it back to the strategic plan. It's all beautiful, but I got to ask you the one hard question. So we lopped off several steps and that's jumped some people up, not just new people coming in, but people that have been on those steps, pushed them up. That's called salary compression and it's pushing people up against some other people who aren't moving very much. So, you know, could you address how the group has thought about that in terms of fairness to those people?
You know, unfortunately, there are going to, there's no losers per se, but there're just going to be people who are going to win more than others. And there's no way of doing that without keeping the current schedule or adding way more steps in their point levels or columns. You know, to get people as close to their current salary as they are now and make it equitable for everybody, we're going to add more point levels and more columns back and that kind of defeats the whole purpose. So by condensing the salary schedule to five columns, you are going to have people who are only going to get a hundred dollar raise. And you are going to have people, because we're lapping off those first three and a half steps to be competitive, you're going to have people getting a four thousand dollar raise. And there's just no way around it without, the other option would be to cut off the first four, three and a half steps, so you're hiring at that higher base, but those new people or the person that's been frozen at thirty-three thousand sits, only gets one step so that.
Quit reapply.
You know, I guess. So there are going to be people who are going to get a four thousand dollar raise in this, because our base was so low and we're making our base up. There's going to be people who get eight hundred dollar raises. The average compensation raise in this transition is going to be between two and four hundred dollars. So the majority of our people are going to gain between two and four hundred dollars. But there's going to be a hundred and twenty-one people that are currently at BA zero zero, step one, and have been there for the last two or three years that are going to get a four thousand dollar raise. And there are people who are going to get an eight hundred dollar raise or an eight hundred and fifty dollar raise, because they're really close to the points. And so there's no way of avoiding that without expanding this and making it bigger. So it's not going to be equitable across the board to everybody. And you're right, some people aren't going to like that.
In the traditional system, having negotiated many of these contracts, there are occasions when, but because of falling out of competitive lines that those issues of, that it's fair and in some cases I've heard the terms, it is fair to all, but it's more fair to others. And you just simply suffer that consequence when you deal with any kind of realignment. And this is a realignment that's long overdue in order to be competitive.
And it is, it's not ideal. If we had more resources as a district, there would be other ways to solve that fair and more fair problem, but I mean, this salary schedule already costs nine hundred and fifty dollars, nine hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, nine hundred and fifty thousand to transition. To make it equitable for everybody or fair for everybody would increase that cost significantly. But it is a vision and people, even if they only get a hundred dollar raise, at least they have a vision that the following year, if they do get the points, that they will get.
They have control.
An increase. They have control over their future destiny.
And we've been adrift for the last three years.
Right. Yeah. If a person earned seventy-plus credits in a year, would they move to point levels?
Yeah.
We talked about that as a committee too.
This goes back to sustain it and it goes back to sustain it.
And as far as earning credits, must those be graduate credits? Or could they be undergraduate credits?
So for example, we have CTE teachers, career and technical education teachers that need to take a course from, let's say, Fox Valley Technical College to remain current. I would believe we would approve that for district points.
There is also the opportunity that a person to be, to make themselves more beneficial to our population or student-taking undergraduate in a four-year university course, that would be a benefit to another major that provides a greater teaching opportunity for them to expand it. And some of those courses may very well be undergraduate. It would be very reasonable to assume that they meet the delivery on the four pillars, there would be no reason to justify that considering that.
I guess from my own standpoint, I look at this and I think district points must be earned outside of the contract days.
Correct.
I think it is possible for someone to get their masters and not necessarily improve as a teacher. And I, you know, you're talking about having them, I'm looking at what the purpose of this is, that the purpose is to compensate someone for being a teacher and for being an effective teacher. And yet we're asking them to do things outside of the contract days and we're asking them to do things that we don't necessarily know will help them improve as a teacher. And I don't see a direct bearing on the classroom. And I don't know, I guess I wouldn't necessarily expect this, but you know, the only one who mentioned a child throughout this entire conversation was Barb. And she talked about, you know, sending kids over to Europe. It just seems very separate, the chart and the points and all that seem very separate from the classroom. And I find that disturbing.
Actually, if you go back and you look at high quality instruction matters and you look at all these things, all of that was based off of, we know that, and research has proven out, that a high quality teacher is the most important factor in student learning. And that is.
I would agree with that.
Exactly. And so when you look at district points and we look at what are we valuing and compensating, we want to incentivize things that we know that are going to grow the professional and increase the quality of teaching. And by increasing the quality of instruction, increasing the quality of teaching, increasing the quality of the educator that is working with that child, you therefore, and there's a direct correlation to it, you therefore are going to get improvement in that child. And so whether you are a school counselor, a school psychologist, you're a classroom teacher, by doing these things that line up to the four pillars, that grow the educator in the social, emotional capacity to be able to work with that child, or by improving their content knowledge or by improving their instruction, they are directly impacting that child. And this conversation has been extremely heavy about the professional, because we're talking about how do we incentivize and how do we get that professional the best they can be so that they can impact that child. And so, yes, students are talked about in here, but we are focusing on the adults within the organization to grow them right now.
Yep. We spent a lot of time talking about master's degrees in this group and we spent a lot of time in our committee talking about the value of master's degrees. And there's a lot of research that shows that a master's degree is valuable and there's a lot of research that shows that master's degrees do not improve student achievement. So it depends upon what research you want to plan on.
It depends on the individual.
But we also have to be competitive and attract and retain. And a lot of our neighboring districts and a lot of districts that have gone to alternative compensation schedules still honor masters. And so if we're going to be competitive and attract and retain, we felt that we still have to compensate master's degrees in some way or another.
I think also, I mean, the idea that the DPI recognizes that board certification and masters are valuable, because that puts you in the master educator level.
Correct. You have to have a master's.
Right, and that was going to be my next thing, is that there are some positions within a school system that requires a master's degree to be in it. You cannot be a school counselor without a master's degree. And so if we are going to reflect all of our professional educators within this compensation model, master's degrees have to be included.
Do you need a master's to teach AP?
Yeah.
Cap, you're supposed to put cap.
You're supposed to put cap. AP, it's absolutely recommended, but to be adjunct faculty, you have to have a master's degree and referably in the content area that you're teaching in.
So there is value in this.
When it comes to the research, you all know this, it depends on the research.
Correct.
And that's not really holding a lot of water anymore, because the sample sizes are so bad and the methodology's so flawed. So I, you know, research is research.
Well, and to be in good standing, you are being evaluated. So you could have a master's degree, not be needing the benchmarks.
And get put on a plan of improvement.
And then you get kicked out of the system.
But why wouldn't you just want to cut to the chase and evaluate someone on their job?
We do. That's what the evaluation is. It's the.
But it's every three years.
For people that, after they've been in the system for three years. For new teachers, it's every year.
Right.
So you have to assume that if somebody's in after three years, they kind of know what they're doing and, you know, as long as they're making their benchmarks, everything is good. You don't suddenly become a poor teacher, maybe you have a bad year or something like that, but I think the assumption is after your first three years, if you haven't been booted by then, you're probably going to be okay.
And from a standpoint of annual evaluations, in an ideal world, and their US Department of Commerce has done an extensive study on, it's readily available, I don't have it in front of me, is the comparison of the issue of private sector versus public sector. And there is no place in the industry where we would expect that one supervisor would monitor the performance of forty people. And on average, our principals are dealing with more than forty people that, and to be able to do that with the depth that our instrument requires each year would not be possible. We can't afford to be business in this case, because business affords to have a ratio generally of one to nine, one to twelve in supervisor-supervisee relationships at the very most.
And you can do evaluations less than every three years, especially if it's warranted.
Yes.
If there's parental complaints, if there's, you know, employee or peer complaints or if, you know, somebody witnesses something. So it's not just every three years, no matter what.
In the role I played in the union of the teaching department, a teacher to have been evaluated here for me to meet with Mike and do a plan of improvement, it was the principal and the union working with the teacher to put something in writing, so everybody was on the same page.
Yeah.
And I don't think we ever looked at it and it's really changed to not be something that you're on the track to be gotten rid of. It's on, you're on the track so we can coach you and I think that's really changed. But it wasn't necessarily an evaluation year, it could be any year for somebody, it just had to be that year, that, because the principals are still walking in and doing, we all know what's going on in all the different classrooms. And now that I'm not in the classroom, I can truly see where those principals, they see it, they're in the halls all the time. It doesn't have to be a formally evaluation, so I think it doesn't matter that you're being formally evaluated every three years. Those administrators know who's doing what's going on and who needs more support, so.
The evaluation that you're referring to is the existing evaluation.
The evaluation that we're referring to is the state model, it's the educator effectiveness.
One, two, three, and four.
Correct, that has that rating. It's a lot more complicated than that. We piloted it this year. The whole state of Wisconsin is going full-blown, either with the Charlotte Danielson DPI model or with the CISA six effectiveness project. It has to be one or the other. And evaluation is extremely comprehensive. Our principals are going through a very rigorous process. They went through last summer and our new principals that are on board, we got them started today, to become certified observers, so that there is validity and reliability behind this. But the other key to this is that DPI has said that the educator effectiveness model is, they do not recommend, nor do they believe it should be a pay-for-performance or a model, you use this evaluation, like this rating equates to this much money. It was not designed to be that way. And Charlotte Danielson, I have seen her in person, we have read many of her articles and her responses to the framework for teaching and that evaluation instrument was never designed to be, receive this rating, receive this type of compensation. It's to grow the professional educator, so that you have the most effective teacher in front of those students. And that's what it's about.
I guess I still like what you guys are presenting here. I particularly like it on your next slide down, where you start showing comparables. I will say this though, that.
Why can't I get it?
There are a number of different things.
Oh, no, the board.
With what I do with the state hands and our union is that outside of our normal seminars and workshop, people are expected to, if they want to get a better pay rate and a different classification, they need to go take the education themselves. You want to become, if you want to be ending up making thirty-eight bucks an hour as a certified welder, you need to go down and do that and then come back and we'll put you to work as a certified welder, that kind of stuff. So it's outside of their regular works cycle, which is addressing one issue. The second issue is, as you guys have already said, the person is still evaluated or if they're put on a plan of improvement. What I do like about this is that there's incentive-based in here to do something, which I find, I think is inherent in almost anybody who goes into education or into a system like this, is these are highly creative people to begin with and that they are actually lifelong learners. And now you're putting them in a position to where they can actually be compensated for doing something which they would do anyway. I mean, I still, I don't get compensated for learning about Rome, but that's what I want to do this year, so I'm going through this great courses, Rome series. What I'm saying is, is that I think that this is a good idea in that you're giving incentive and you're rewarding people for trying to better themselves. Whether this will actually reflect into the classroom, and this will be my third and the last point, I've seen people go for like high steel riggers, who we've had for many, many years, and they know their stuff, they really do. They can be crawling in the beams of the Brown County arena and know exactly where the stress coefficients are and a double bridle and all this other stuff. Then I see these kids come in who know all the technology and are asking them, why aren't you using a laser on the floor to point out to where you hang the chain? And the old guys go, well, I never thought of that. So I think what we're going to get is a nice homogeneous composite of experience, because those young kids with the lasers, when it comes down to it, the old guys know how to tie the knots better. And my point here, I even know that it's simple, is that I think that what you're going to get with this is going to be a good. to get with this is going to be a good collaborative, rewarding incentive for people to better themselves, and hopefully, this will transpose into something positive for the kids. And I do like this next chart.
The, you're talking about the DPI chart, correct? Yep, this is the latest information from DPI. You can go right on the website, actually, that was listed in the board packet. You can click on that, and you can search for whatever CISA region, you can sort it however you want, and it really gives you a good comparison of where everybody's at in our, in our real, in our real need to be competitive. We need to do this.
Well, you can see, I think some of it certainly is reflective on average local experience and average total experience. I mean, this is part of the strategic planning, is attraction and retention.
Right.
And by elevating our, our entry level, which we all know is, is not comparable with the surrounding district. It looks like, just by looking at this, that you're going to add an additional two to three years, on average, with retaining teachers.
Anyone else? Questions, comments?
I think we all, these folks who have worked on this, a big thank you for all the effort that has gone into this, when other districts have taken-
We were a great committee.
-up to a year longer or more to accomplish this.
Did these guys get points for this project?
That came up too, in discussion.
Correct.
Besides, it was in the previous year. And we have not met since Janu-, July 1st.
Aww. Lot of, lot of good, hard work. Thanks to everyone involved.
Yes, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we will move on to individually considered resolutions. Number one, since they're individually considered, I guess I won't have it. Be resolved, the Ashkoshary School District Board of Education approved the appointments, resignations, retirements, and salary schedule as filed with Secretary of the Board of Education. So a move, resolution one A. And resolution one B, be resolved that the Ashkoshary School District Board of Education approved the appointment and salary schedule as filed with Secretary of the Board of Education. Right, but the, the resolution, we don't have to do all these appointments individually, right?
No, but one B, you have to plead for one A, plead for one B separately.
Okay, not one A, I thought because it was number one, I could do them together. All right, so one A.
So moved.
Second question. Under resignations, there's, the last name listed there lists that, lists that individual as a point-six PE person at Roosevelt and a point-six PE teacher at Jefferson, was that individual really a one-point-two employee?
I'm certain that he was not.
Just-
Yep. One-point-oh employee.
Okay.
Anything else? Please call the roll.
Saginaw?
Aye.
Saginaw, Guy Weedhough?
Aye.
Weedhough, Guy, Vito?
Aye.
Vito, aye. Eliasen?
Aye.
Werner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Wachikiri?
Resolution one B, be resolved that the Ashkoshary School District Board of Education approved the appointment and salary schedule as filed with Secretary of the Board of Education, James Fox, Director of Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Department, effective August 4th, 2014 through June 30th, 2015. In the amount, in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, nine forty-one ninety-two. Call the roll. Oh, is there a discussion? No, call the roll.
Weedhough?
Aye.
Weedhough, aye. Vito?
Aye.
Vito, aye. Eliasen? Werner?
Aye.
Werner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Saginaw?
Aye.
Saginaw, aye. Wachikiri?
Resolution number two, be resolved that the Ashkoshary School District Board of Education approved salaries for administrative compensation for the 2014-15 contract year effective July 1st, 2014, as filed with the Secretary of the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I had asked that this one be pulled. I have a couple of concerns with this. We, we, in the 2013-14 school year, we finished that year with twelve administrators who were below the range for their particular salary. And applying the one-point-four-six percent to these would still leave three of them below the bottom of the range for their salary. This proposal also would give the one-point-four-six salary increase to two individuals who just started their administrative careers in the district July 1st, giving them a raise of twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars and ninety-three cents. I'm really concerned about these people who were somewhat left behind, so to speak, by being below the range. I would rather see money initially go to those people to bring them up to the range, and then redistribute the dollars that remain across the board. But I, I really would like to take care of these people who spent all of last year below the salary range and saw other people hired new into the system at salaries above theirs.
From, from the standpoint of, we, we had intended to come back to the board with the issue regarding the continued correction of this, the individuals, one hundred percent of the individuals on the list have, well, a, have, last year, all but six, including those that you referred to, had no compensation increase whatsoever last year, because we distributed the one percent that remained to the six or seven, that there was no increase whatsoever. We have planned to bring back for board consideration, a fix to get everyone into the ranges that had been established, and, and we would come back with a second action that relates to that. But all of the, to sacrifice a fundamental, just inflationary increase for these individuals who, of which all but seven received no increase whatsoever last year, would be, and, and there are a number of individuals from the previous year that had not had a compensation increase now for three years.
I think what Barb is suggesting, those that people who we've just hired-
Are there two parts to Barb's point?
That, that the compensation for them could be used more effectively to bring the others up to the appropriate level?
Could be done that way. According to my rough calculations, and I, I was doing this because we just received this tonight, it would be about twelve-thousand dollars to bring these people up within the range and then apply, it would, I guess it wouldn't be one, I guess it would be a one-point-four-six percent. I just think we should take care of these people. Some of them have been here more than ten years, and for them to be below the range and not be compensated and brought into the range at this time, I, I just, I have a problem with that. I also have a problem with this twelve-hundred-and-fifty-dollar range for somebody who started their, their career on July 1st. One of those persons has an emergency license, that means they haven't completed all the coursework. And they're eight days into the job, and we're giving them a twelve-hundred-and-fifty-dollar raise, which is bigger than the raise for some of these people who have been with us four to ten years, and are currently below the, the bottom of the range for their salary. But you said you have a fix.
We will, we bring back with the proposal for a fix relating to that. Our intent is to deal with the realignment data as well, so. But if it's the board's discretion to want to have us lay this over for, and come back with an alternative that recognizes the issues, we can certainly bring this back on the 23rd.
I think part of the issue for new employees is they're hired based on the thirteen-fourteen ranges. So even though they just started, they were hired based on thirteen-fourteen ranges, and so if all administrators are beginning to raise for fourteen-fifteen, shouldn't those people who were hired based on a thirteen-fourteen rank salary be given that increase as well?
Well, she's saying the people that have been here for more than ten years are below the salary.
Right.
So why, why not quit and reapply?
And Mike has done a cop, a comparison of ranges, and we were going to be bringing that back this fall.
So would it be better to just bring it back all at once? Would that, would that be okay? Instead of two pieces, just one, one piece?
I think it's going to make it easier to vote in favor of this one, if we know what the other one is.
Sure. I would suggest we just simply lay it over and bring it back to-
Could I, could I get a motion then to lay it over?
So moved.
Oh, yes, excuse me, to postpone, not to lay it over. Postpone to a- Yes.
To the 23rd.
Twenty-third of this month?
Right.
Okay.
But don't we have an attendance concern with-
We do, there's, there likely to be fewer board members here on the 23rd. I will not be here, and John will not be here.
Do we still have quorum then?
You still have a quorum if you have, if you have four. But do you want to lay it over until the 13th? Or until the 27th?
I think it would be best to have a full board.
Well, we won't have a full board for, until September, maybe, so.
You want August 13th?
I'll be here then. Well, I mean, we have other employee groups, too, that have discussions going on, and they're having to wait longer than that, so I'm, I'm not sure that it's a horrible problem to wait until September to have a whole board to vote, but that's up to the rest of you. It's just my opinion.
If we, August 13th would be a meeting that we would normally not vote, but we could lay it over till then. I will be absent, but I believe the rest of the board will be here. The 27th, I will be here, but it sounds like maybe someone else will be absent.
In August, you mean?
Yeah.
I'll be here then, too.
All right. Whose motion, who, who made the motion, actually? Postpone. Steve, what, what date would you put in your motion?
August 13th, I move that we postpone to August 13th.
All right. Could I get a second?
A second.
All right. If there's no discussion, then call the roll.
Vito?
Aye.
Vito, aye. Eliasen? Werner?
Aye.
Werner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Aye.
Saginaw, aye. Weedhough?
Aye.
Weedhough, aye.
And obviously, then, there is nothing on the original motion. Resolution number three, be resolved that the Ashkoshary School District Board of Education approved the restructuring of the administrator post-employment benefit with the three-tier plan as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I had a question on this one. First of all, I, I think this is a great plan. I think it's beneficial to the district, short run and long run. I think it's beneficial to the retirees. My one question is on the explanation side, in terms of using fund balance to help pay for this.
Part of it is, is a catch-up provision.
Okay.
Because tier-one grandfathers and anybody who's in ten opportunity years of retirement, tier-two, they're no longer grandfathered, so they start getting that stipend put away from, for them every year. But if you don't catch those people up, there's a catch-up provision for those people. If you don't catch them up, they'll never get any additional benefits. So there's a catch-up provision to catch those people up. And if you don't fund that now, you, you don't take advantage of the interest earnings on that to make them almost equivalent to what the, the current benefit is now. So it is our recommendation that over the next three years, you just move that money into a trust fund. Now, if those people leave in the meantime, that money has to stay in the trust fund, but what it'll do is it'll lower the amount that you have to put in annually for, for new people.
And the amount that you're talking about for the catch-up is the one-million-three-sixty-five?
Correct.
And the amount that this will cost annually is a hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand?
Correct.
Okay. But you anticipate a savings of a million-eight?
Correct. At least. That's just based on today's numbers.
Yearly.
Right.
Right.
Okay, I guess my question then is, that one-million-three-sixty-five, is that, that's not all in year one, is it? That spread four-fifty-five over three years?
Well, we recommend spreading it over three years. I mean, in an ideal world, you'd fund it all, all right away.
Right.
But, you know, I was, some of that was based on how this fiscal year ends, but I think this fiscal year will end very close. So that's why I recommend it over three years, but it's always something we can revisit after we see how the fiscal year ends.
And the one-million-eight per year would take how long until we actually saw that?
You know, it's going, you're not going to see that right away, because you grandfathered-
If we saw it right away, we wouldn't have to use fund balance.
Correct. Because you're grandfathering everybody within ten opportunity years, the savings really aren't going to be fully realized from a cash flow standpoint until all, all those people who are grandfathered are gone.
So ten-year period.
Right. But, but what's going to happen is some of those people who are grandfathered will not retire from here, so that'll, that'll close the gap.
And others will retire over the course of ten years.
Right, right. So you're going to start seeing some cash flow savings, it just won't be the one-point-eight right away.
Okay, can we subtract that from the one-million-three-sixty-five per year, in order to bring it down and lower the amount that we're taking out of fund balance?
It has to stay in the trust fund.
No, no, what I mean is that, the, the one-million-eight that we're saving is that is-
Oh, yeah, you can, yeah, that, ideally, you're going to use that over time to-
Right.
-fund the trust. And then eventually, it'll be saved, true savings for you.
Right.
Yes.
I guess I was confused then, because the little chart shows the million-three-sixty-five coming out of year one, but then in the narrative, it talks about taking a third out over each of the next three years.
Yeah, that's kind of confusing. I should have, I should have done that a little different. I mean, in, in ideal world, we'd put the one-three in right away, but-
Right.
Because I don't think that's probably prudent, we'd probably do it over three years.
Okay.
So you don't have that hidden fund balance. So even, you're really just moving the money from your fund, ten fund balance to a trust fund balance, and even though in that trust fund, it's in individuals' names, it's still your district assets until they retire and start drawing that money, or until they vest, and there's that, as you know, there's a vesting schedule, but people can't just drop, leave, you know, you're, even when you move this one-point-three over, people have to be here at least five years before they leave. Someone can't just leave tomorrow and draw their money out.
Knowing that we've made several other commitments to come out of fund balance, where do you see our fund balance ending up then after three years?
I think we're up at sixteen or seventeen percent right now. This might lower it down to maybe fourteen percent.
Okay.
But I'd have to look, I haven't looked at that right off yet.
Thank you.
Anything else? Please call the roll.
Eliasen?
Aye.
Werner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
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 Request for future agenda items? Seeing none. Announcements? Seeing none. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.